Clear, you know, how the services are being funded. Now, where they go up or down, you know, we'll have to see, but.
They're compounding. The fees, as you understand, are compounding. When you look at the surcharge on Avista going up, you know, we're not just talking about property taxes. And again, this subject could go on and on. I'd really like you to address maybe your thoughts on this access road and getting some relief for my neighbors. You guys got any? I know this is caught in litigation, so maybe this will just drag on and on, and he'll continue to suffer like he is. I don't know. I mean, has anybody, has anybody even been on this property?
I have been there, and I've walked the property right after the damage.
So you understand what happened there, Dan?
I walked it.
Yeah. And now we got a pile of junk and mud and no way to get in and out of the backs of our properties or have any fire protection back there. Okay. I mean, what, is there an answer?
I'll go back out there and take a look.
Okay. We sure appreciate it. Thank you very much. I'm very saddened that there's not more of the city here to discuss these issues because your job is thankless. And I know most everybody on this forum, and I have known you all for a long time, and it's a thankless job. But, and I do appreciate the great things you do and the response for our flood was really, you're pretty much on top of it. It just didn't happen quick enough, nor was it monitored correctly. So.
I will answer one thing. As far as the public works directors and stuff not being here, we will have this, as you said, many minutes will be gathered, and we will be able to follow up with those people.
There's still water being, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It will still be able to, the information will be able to get to them. And that's, and the purpose of us to have was this, was so we could hear from the public and then we can kind of gather some feedback and really see what the public is feeling and the grievances that they might be going through.
Well, there's still water being flushed down this straw, whether it's secretly or at not. And I'm wondering why we're wasting that water. I just went out and took pictures. Any of you'd like to see what I've got on my camera? I'd be more than happy to share with you. And there's still water coming down that draw. And don't know where it's coming from. And I'm, there's culvers now, of course, that are picking it up before they get on my neighbor's property. But something's going on that there's still water being wasted there. So.
We will bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Eldridge, Lewiston resident. I'm here because one of my big things with the previous council was essential spending. Essential spending right now needs to be more. I mean, we are in a, worse than a depression coming up here. Banks going insolvent. Is the city's assets protected, you know, taken care of? You know, there's something coming down with that bank you guys are working with. That's, it's gonna be bad. But anyways, essential spending, the Briden, Burl, that should be considered first. Priority one, saving a lot of money by making those one ways. I say piss on the airport and what Gary Peters and them are doing up there. There's four of you up here that are his. And I don't like that one bit because you're supposed to be here for the people. But anyways, back to essential spending, there's a lot of things that need to be done. I was digging into the, the water systems and everything. These four inches, what, you know, pipes in it? This stuff is ancient. That's priority essential spending is getting these pipes up to date. I had so many things I wanted to bring up that I was just, I just get so incensed when I get up here because I see people that could be doing a great job working for the people instead of a group. Now, I, I don't understand, this is something I've been really pondering on bringing up, is Gary Peters' indiscretion where he broke in onto the airport, stole seven hard drives a little while back, and digging into the Department of Homeland Security and stuff. That guy should not have no security access until that thing is resolved. And it hasn't been resolved. It's just sort of been swept under the rug. Things haven't been done properly. People see this. People wondering why someone that's up here gets free passes and you guys are working with him. Broke in onto the airport, stole seven hard drives. There's people that lost their jobs up there because he swept everybody out over porn on one computer and a lie of sex on the second floor. Those are lies. The whole crew had to go. This, people shouldn't be controlling that airport like for the agenda that's going on up there. There's an agenda going on up there that you guys are allowing. You guys should be changing your, your people out. They shouldn't have control of this airport. Matter of fact, they should, there's two, if not more, that shouldn't be sitting on there right now. Gary Peters, Joe Gish, some of you been promoted by him, and Doug Havens. Hannah, you follow him around like a puppy on the parade and you're side by side, just following him around. I mean, we knew, my wife and I knew a while back when they were trying to get you on the Republican Central Committee. Lot of bad things going on, and people see it, and people are fed up. And I get up here, I get so mad because you guys could be working for the people and we would be backing you. But you're standing up there on high while all of us down here paying more taxes, invented taxes, you know, that thing you mentioned about this waste, this new water fee, which you mentioned, isn't even, isn't even required right now. Right now, people are hurting because of the inflation, the taxes, the food and everything. Stuff could be put off to help the senior citi-, I know so many senior citizens that we've talked to that are trying to make a choice of food and what bills they're gonna pay. They come to us. We have so many meetings. And you guys could be helping, but because you guys are up here and you guys, this income median, you don't see the people down here that are hurting. And it hurts me because I am a man for the people. I know about this indiscretions, what's going on. And when I brought this stuff up, what did they do? They brought up my past of 20 something years ago, my conviction, which I don't care. I've always been very open about sharing what happened to me and me going to prison for 14 years for a murder that wasn't a murder. But I went and did it. I fought it to the Ninth Circuit in California, and I'm not done fighting it till it's overturned. But I haven't been afraid. That was the only thing I ever did. I was a city councilman, Republican president, I mean, tribal president of my corporation, vice president, council member, volunteer fireman. I have so many. Because I'm personally, I was taught by my grandfather to fight for the people. He was mayor of my town in Alaska. And when things got tough, he looked at cutting because you got $120 million budget, the city, yearly. You guys could be doing for the people. You could have meetings with each department going, where can we make cuts in it? No, you guys don't do that. You're looking at ways to tax the people more. There's senior citizens, this is a retirement community, and people are hurting. And you guys look the other way, working on an agenda with this airport and this BS for this tourism crap. We don't want to pay for that right now. We need to be buckling down and helping the people.
Do you have questions? Do you want us to answer?
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm trying to go back to that one you said as far as city employees making cuts. Last year during our city budget, Dan actually did incur, not incurred, I don't know, a challenge to have the city staff take budgets from their, take cuts from their budgets. And a lot of them did. And they took that challenge to heart. So we have done some of that. And, and as Hannah says, we're looking at more. And, and things aren't gonna happen overnight. I understand that. And, and we know that people are hurting. But we are working behind and trying to figure out how we can get a hold of this as best as possible. So that, that's my answer for that one. I don't know if anybody had any other.
Well, I mean, obviously, we've never had a conversation, Rick. A lot of accusations have been made. But I would encourage you to, again, hold our feet to the fire. I don't know that I've voted for anything that was non-essential. As far as the airport, the past is the past. I haven't had anything brought to me that needs my immediate concern to do anything currently right now that hasn't already been done. You are exactly right. There were shady things and craziness and, excuse my language, piss and matches that have happened. I don't want any part of it. I am here to make decisions. Call me on it. If I vote for something that's absolutely stupid or cheating people out of money, I want you to bring it to my attention. But until then, I, I don't know that I've done anything. So I get that you don't like me, and that's fine. But I think everybody up here is working for the people. Our opinions might be different.
My opinion of you personally is you're probably a great person, but politically, where you stood, where you went with that group, I'm not happy about that, you know? But I, I told you, be you, fight independently. Get away from Doug Havens. Get away from them. On another thing, I wanted to mention that I had a, a talk with Kathy Schroeder, and that fire department, those funds have already, they're, they're their own funds. They've been saved up. There's no new taxes for that fire department, that building. It's their own funds. I don't want that money. You guys rescinding it for whatever reason, I don't, I don't want to see that Gary Peters getting a hold of that money up there. Those, he disrespected our, our first responders by taking their money and then kicking them off the airport.
Can I, can I ask, you mean as far as building another facility on that airport property? Is that what you mean by that?
Yeah. I don't want, I, I, I think that it needs to be Briden or somewhere else, especially if you make it one ways. I don't know. If, I, I think first, to save the people's property, their land, you choose to make them one ways instead of plowing everybody, eminent domain, whatever you do to take their land. That's improper right now. This built, this whole construction thing needs to go away. One way, each would do that, and then you could focus on 21st Street or, and fixing some of the bad, but saving a lot of money.
I do have to correct you, Rick. Two, over $2 million of additional funding has to be found, which would have to come from the taxpayer.
Yeah, but it's been, it's been rolling over. It's been being saved right now. The six plus million.
You would have to add $2 million that is on the taxpayer.
If we would have stayed with the contract that, because they had tacked on an extra million and a half or 2 million to finish that project out. And that's why we decided to terminate that contract with that company. Because it was kind of a, and we felt maybe like a sneak charge that we would not, was not talked about. And, and in the light of transparency and, and being, and, and having, making a good business decision, we didn't feel working with that contract to build that fire station was the best decision for the city.
Well, yeah, you guys can put it out to bid.
But they had been, they wanted to be self-funded. They were saving the money. But COVID came, everything was extended beyond the real where, where they were. So that contractor was not doing the right thing.
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize, I don't want that money going up to the airport.
It will not.
I don't want none of that happening, you know? Too many unchecked things going on up that airport. That airport needs to be brought back into the city or the city and the county. It's, it's his own personal sandbox up there right now. And he's, there's just a lot of stuff going on. Contracts with construction companies that, you know, I mean, there's just no oversight that needs, that needs to be done by the city and the county, you know? Oversight and, I, I don't know. I, I had my piece. Thank you, guys. Like I said, Hannah, you know, I don't dislike you. I just don't like who you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mark Ettleblut. And first off, I just want to ask, I gotta ask a question. I, because of, I, I'm, I live downtown, and so I'm gonna be impacted by all this water stuff. And so, and I have thousands of dollars in, in rhododendrons and dogwood trees and you name it. I got a lot of it. And I live in a sandbar, so I know where, where the water goes and it's down in the ground. But anyway, I, I, I just would like to know, when, when was the last time that this shut-off valve on that, and that high reservoir was replaced? Because I know the track city, the, the track record of this city at maintaining our infrastructure sucks. I mean, I don't know how many times that sewage treatment plant over there blew a gasket because we never bothered to ever replace worn-out equipment that gets old and worn out. We just run it, ran it, ran it, ran it till it fell apart. And then, and then there was never any money to, we had to go to the city council to get funding to do all that stuff. So now we're spending $30 million for a new sewage treatment plant. And that's where this, I'm sure this $45 he's talking about. The technology in those reservoirs up there is no different than what's in the back of your toilet at home, except for one, obviously, one small thing. And that's that there's no pipe to take the excess water away, which in your toilet, there's a little pipe in there that if he gets, if that valve sticks, the water will go down into the sewer, down into your toilet. Obviously, up there, it didn't. The valve obviously failed. The water kept coming in to the point when it, then, then once it started going out through the building, it took the building. Now, I'm hoping that maybe we learned a lesson over on this lower, the lower reservoir, that something can, you know, we need to have some kind of a backup, four and a half million gallons of water and no, no safety device there, other than a, some kind of a warning that, that the valve failed to shut the water and coming into that thing went. Okay. So that's part of my gripe is because I've lived here all my life, except most of a year when I spent going and seeing what some of the rest of the world lived like. But I've, I've, this, it's just like this water plant back in the late 90s. And I know Jim thinks different, but I lived here and I pay the water bills. We started raising water rates to, to fund replacing that water treatment plant. And after 20-plus years, I asked Chris Davies where the money was, and he showed me a big goose egg. So then we have a $30 million bond that, you know, now I'm paying 30-some dollars a month for my meter fee before I even turn on the water. But I just, my issues and, and how you expect people to stand with a hose in their hand that are gonna keep trees and shrubbery and those kind of things watered. I mean, you know, I'm in my 70s, and I'm still get around a little bit, but there's a heck of a lot of people out there that are not gonna be able to stand out there and hold the hose or whatever. We gotta allow some way to, maybe just a small sprinkler that you could put out there to soak and water a tree. You know, this is supposed to be a city of trees. Well, trust me, they'll be dying. Because, you know, this isn't a city, trees weren't growing here when Lewis and Clark came through. I'll guarantee you, maybe a few along the river. But other than that, all these trees that are up here in Normal Hill and my, my property and your property, they have to have water. They're not gonna make it. And so I don't know what the plans are for all of this. And the other thing, the one other thing I had to say was, I was aware that years back, the city ran a water pipe and connected with Lloyd's water in the orchards. Now, that's, that's as I understand it. This has been some years ago. What I don't understand is why are, why does this city have such an issue with Lloyd? You know, it's just like the high school up there. Lloyd said, we got water for the high school, but yet we spent how many millions drilling a well behind Sportsman's Warehouse and building a big storage reservoir up there. And it was all mostly, as I understand, all on the backs of the people that live downtown. But, but why aren't we working together with Lloyd to provide water for us down here if, if such as pipe does exist? And, you know, they have, if they're saying they have plenty of water, and they've got a storage reservoir at Harith Park that's gotta be 10 million gallons. I don't know how many for sure, but it's a damn big storage tank. And, and why are, why don't we work together to, to help the people in this town one way or another, whether we're pumping water to them or they're letting water come to us? And we, they wouldn't have to pump it. Gravity, gravity. Have I, have I used up my three minutes?
No.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I, you know, you guys could say all you want about, all these reasons, why, why, why. But, you know, I did remodeling for a living, and I know that, that that, what happened at that water reservoir didn't have to happen. Now, you can make all the excuses in the world, but I know that if we're gonna, it's just like 20, like you talked about 21st Street, driving halfway down the turn lane to keep from knocking the shocks and, and stuff off of your car. Because that's what it, that's what it's become. But yet we go up and spend $400,000 for a roundabout, and I know that you guys get these grants. And I know where that, that's a big push. That's, I would have thought after 18th Avenue, we would maybe think a little bit about where we're throwing all these monies. Because we spent at least a million of our monies, plus a million of somebody else's money on 18th Avenue. And so if we spent $400,000, somebody else spent for another $400,000 for that roundabout. And so we needed that roundabout like we needed another pothole in the road. We don't need, here's a 25 mile an hour road up there. You got the boys' club and a school. And what a roundabout's designed to do? Speed up traffic. Well, I know what you just want to say about four-way stops. If, if you look at a town, you look at a city the size of Lewiston, and four-way stops, that's all we used to have in this town was four-way stops. Rick there, his dad's grocery store was at the corner of 11th Avenue and 17th. That was a four-way stop, long before you were even born.
Are we gonna do a Q and A, or did you just want?
No, I'm just, I'm up here, I, this other fellow was, you thought he was venting. I'm not venting. I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just tired of, of, of us, the city taking monies and throwing them, just like you voted 30-some thousand for a consultant on that, on that park, $95 million park. Do you think that people in this town are gonna be willing to vote? We're, we're gonna spend over, probably by the time it's done, 100 million for a courthouse that we didn't get to vote on. And I, and, and I still ask myself, why the hell didn't the court or this, this county go up and take the old high school building? Would have been perfect. But, you know, no, we gotta be down here on Main Street or something. But I'm just saying, just like this fellow's saying, all we do is throw good money after bad money, people's property taxes going crazy, and now 100 million for a courthouse? And in the streets, whenever we get to fixing 21st Street and Briden and all these roads? Okay? Do you want, if you want to say something to me, I, but I probably can answer you back.
That was the point of this. Because our other council meetings, you come up and you talk.
I have, trust me, ma'am, I don't know you, your name, but trust me, I have come to many city council meetings, and I've got up here and I've complained about, in the summer months, I'm paying, I'm paying 200, 300 bucks a month just for water.
Yeah, I understand. That's, that's why we had this, is so that we can actually respond to you. Because otherwise, you guys come up and you talk, and then we don't actually get to respond to you. Or we, we maybe can respond at the end of the meeting, but by that time, it could be 9 o'clock at night.
You know, I'll just tell you, years ago, when Kevin Poole was the mayor on, okay? And I asked him, does this city spend water that was earmarked for water, for things besides water? And his reply was, according to this, some code. And I says, I didn't ask you that question, Kevin. I ask you if this city is spending water monies for other things. And he repeated what he said. And Don Roberts, who was the city attorney at the time, and I knew Don Roberts, I rebuilt his deck for him. He stood up and he said, yes, we are. And so what I, what I want to say to you, and we got, you want to talk about this new stormwater fee and, and you want to, you want to take money, charge an additional couple of percent or whatever, 2% or 3% for Avista stuff, so we can have money. But then when people see you spend $400,000 for a roundabout, do you think they're gonna, they're gonna willingly vote to give you more money if you're just gonna waste it on stuff like that? That's the point I'm making. And so, you know, all of you, and I know Jim's been on this city council for a long time, coming and going, and Kathy. And I'm just saying, you know, we gotta start thinking about the bucks because people are getting tired of having to constantly shell out and shell out and shell out. And I've told Kathy before, you want to raise water, you want the town to look nice, but everybody lets their yard burn up because they can't afford to put water on it. So anyway, I'm done.
Mark, I need to respond to just a couple of things about the reservoir. I, I received a copy of a draft report this week, I think Wednesday. And there'll be another one coming soon. So we're about ready to go live with some information that'll answer some of your questions. So.
Well, and, and another, another question I have.
Well, let me, let me respond to that.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead.
And then the comment about the $30,000. Yes, we did vote to do that. And the reason for that is because that's the public information that we need to get out to the voters to decide whether or not they want to vote for Community Park. Had we not done that, then we may have had to then hire somebody to do that. But we have to get that information out. We can't just not.
And that's okay. But I talk to people a lot, and I'm obviously a talkative person. And I talk to folks. And I have not talked to one person that doesn't think spending 95 million at this point in time on that park is nuts.
Right. And that's why we're not doing it.
Well, no. Well, I am just saying though, I mean, for one thing, for the, a city the size of Lewiston, we've got all kinds of parks. We got a lot of parks. And so, and I know it'd be nice to have all the stuff that they have earmarked, because I walk up there. And I see all the little signs that say this is the proposed this, and this is the proposed that. And I know Ryan Skinner did all that work on that little bicycle trail thing down in the canyon, where I used to hunt pheasants, by the way. And so I understand all those things. But people, you know, for a town that, and I appreciate the fact that you have gotten the budget better. Because it was to the point where it was the size of the budget of Coeur d'Alene. And it's outrageous. And, and what we're paying people is outrageous to pay $200,000 for, you know, plus benefits. The benefits this city pays for their employees, it's outrageous. I didn't, I worked for the government for eight and a half years. I never got those kind of benefits. It's all.
Let me give you one other, let me give you one, one other example, because the time will go quick, and this is all good. But when we talk about ways to change how we do business at the city, and I would address this comment to Judge Bradbury too. For example, we have three different funds at the city of Lewiston that we have direct control over. So like the retirement funds, we don't get to decide how to invest those funds. That's with a fiduciary. We don't get to do that. But we have other funds at the city of Lewiston where we get to make the daily decisions about what to do with those monies. And for those three funds that we have, there's a diversified bond fund, there's the state treasurer's pool, and then we have our checking account, basically, which is at Wells Fargo. And last January, February, March, the interest earnings on those three accounts was $20,000 for the three-month period. This past January, February, March, it was $667,000.
In interest?
In interest. And that's not, that didn't, just didn't happen. Interest rates went up. We all know that. But it wasn't just interest rates going up that did that. We are changing how we're doing business inside the city, and I'm happy to share that with you, Judge. So there are a lot of good things that are happening, and those stories need to get out. And that's why these types of forums help us talk about that. But what that does, what those kind of activities do is, we all know that inflation eats up what we can afford in our households. And it's the same thing for the city. So when inflation keeps eating up our budget, it means that we have less and less purchasing power, and we can raise taxes, or we can invest our monies more wisely and take those revenues.
And I do, and I appreciate all those. And I know that you're trying to change things because I'm sure that it's gonna be a process. But like I say, you know, all these fees and, and all this stuff that's coming at me, you know, like I said, I live alone, and in the winter, my water bill isn't too much. But in the summer, when I have to try to irrigate my yard and keep, you know, because I like it to look, I want it to look decent. I don't want it to be burned up and full of weeds. But it gets, it's, it's a, it's a good thing I was damn frugal and didn't get divorced two or three times, and I can afford to pay my water bill. But whatever.
Will you let someone else take a role?
Sure, no, I'll sit down.
Sorry, I don't want to cut you. I just want to make sure.
No, I mean, I was gonna, I was gonna stand up and say what happened in the three minutes because obviously I, I'm not. because obviously, I, I'm not the only one that's kind of got up here and ran.
Yeah, no, it's okay. Thank you. We have emails too, so please email if you're not getting things answered.
Hello, everybody, I'm Kyle Harris, twenty-three oh eight, Twelfth Avenue, I've got four and a half-ish questions, so I'll just roll them all out to you, and then we'll go from there. So, first question is about the park, which obviously, I know hasn't been approved, but how much money has currently been spent on the new community park? And was it been spent on, seeing how it hasn't been approved? I know there was a meeting months ago about five hundred thousand or so for gym equipment, and then you got the thirty-one thousand for this, you know what I'm talking about? Then the second question is-
Let's answer that question.
Yeah.
So, I can't tell you the total dollars that have been spent on this community park project, keep in mind, this has been going on, I think, since the nineties, right? I mean, it's been around for a long time, trying to put this together, and so, when we went through the change of government, there were some things already on the books that in my budget, I allowed to move forward, I didn't just go in there and cut them out, but for the outgoing years, outgoing budgets, I did not put them on my budget, so I did not put any new money into that community park. So the, the project you're talking about there, like with the basketball courts and stuff like that, that was a budget that we inherited, and I honored that, so yes, you'll see some activities occurring out there that were, the decisions were made a while ago, and the money's in the budget, and they're gonna spend it.
Yeah, so I appreciate that response. I think if, I know the city has a PR department, they have to, in county, everybody's got one, if you guys could maybe work with that department to clarify these things better to the public, because all we get is a city Lewiston post on Facebook that talks about this, or that, and then there's no clarification, so that allows for misinterpretation and drama and rumors and everything else, so I appreciate that, thank you. The other one is, I know there is supposed to be some parks being closed due to this new park, I believe it's one of them's Pepsi Field, I know we don't own all of the parks, some of them we have leased land on, so I was curious what parks, if you're willing to tell everybody that's watching or here today, what parks would be closed, or the leases would no longer be renewed on?
Well, I don't have an answer for that, because I don't know that we've made those decisions, some of them are privately owned, you know, have their own wells too, these kind of things, but I think it begs the question, and this is why, in part, I wanted to see us really advertise as community parks, so people know what they're voting for, the question is, can we afford to have it all?
Yeah.
And if we can't, then we're gonna have to make those tough decisions, and we're gonna say, we can't do this and this, and so, one of the first question, one of the first things I was shown, right after I got elected, was a, was a PowerPoint on this community park by the city, and when they got done showing it to me, they asked me if I had any questions, and I said, I have one question, and they said, okay, and I said, who's gonna mow the lawn? That was my question, who's gonna mow the lawn? And they looked at me like, we are? And I said, with what? They said, well, we're gonna hire people, and I said, we are? You know, so I think the assumptions, some of the assumptions in the past have been that we're going to grow this park, grow the city, and we're gonna add more staff to it, I don't know that we can afford that.
Yeah.
And so I think this ballot question that all of us will get to vote on if you live in Lewiston, that information needs to get out to people, so it isn't about just, let's build the park, and we're gonna have basketball courts and auditorium and all these kind of things, we need to tell the public, and it's already been disclosed, these are not secrets here, it's already been disclosed that this thing will not pay for itself, we're going to have to add capacity in our budget, more property taxes to subsidize it. But if we don't tell the voters that, they're not gonna know that, that's part of the thirty thousand dollars, is to tell them, hey, th- there's no free lunch here. And so, as a community, is that where we want to invest our resources, our time and our money, and we need to have, we are having that discussion, but we can always do a better job of getting that information out.
Yeah, and that's, goes back to the PR thing, like, the communication from the city to the general public is terrible, I mean, it just, it allows for so much misinformation and, and distrust, because we just don't know, you guys put something out, and then somebody makes a comment, next thing you know, that comment is set in stone, and we have no way of researching, we can't go back and say, hey, what's the real answer? We can't go back and find the minutes for the meeting exactly, or, or understand how to get through the website on the city to even find any of this stuff.
Oh, can I, can I ask a question? Is, is the website itself difficult to find those meeting minutes and past meetings? Is that, is that what we're?
To find the live feed on the city website is almost impossible.
Okay, okay.
So I mean, when it was on Facebook, it was great, because you just get a notification, hey, city's gone live, I don't know why you guys went away from it, I'm sure you had a reason, as long as it's live stream, you guys are meeting, open meeting laws, I don't care.
Okay, thank you. I, I just wanted to clarify, so I make sure I understood.
Yeah, sure, uh, next question.
Can I inter-
Yeah.
Underject, um, and, this has been a mystery for me, I think, as, you know, when you try to do business in this town, or any town, but, and then government, you know, we have, we have a code that says we have to meet open meeting law, and those, it's very, I mean, we hang it on the city hall bulletin board, we've met state code, right?
Yeah.
So, I, I would love to know, like, what, you know, the older population still reads the paper, probably should be in the paper, younger population and, and middle-aged folks like social media, and I, again, that gets fun, right? What is the answer, because I, you know, I would love to direct staff, and I have asked, you know, can we get, you know, public, and we make this quarterly magazine that, and, I, I agree with you, I've yet to find one when I'm out and about in, in town, so, please, like, maybe we have an informal adjunct committee that we, we get people that say, you know what works for my business, or, you know, how do we get this information out, because I completely agree.
On your website portion of it, I know websites, and there's a difference between static and dynamic, what we got going on is just basically putting out information, and there's no communication, it's not a two-way thing, if, let me put up the info, that's it.
Thank you, Todd.
Um, speaking to how meetings are being done in paper, social media, whatever, I live in Sunset Park, I'm surrounded by an elderly population, I know every one of my neighbors, my closest neighbor next to me is eighty-six years old or so, she's all over social media, I mean, the, the newspaper is kind of a dying thing these days, everybody with their grandparents and their grandkids, and FaceTime, everything's on social media or on the internet in some form or another, it's twenty-twenty-three. But yeah, I mean, I get it, that's a hurdle you guys will need to figure out, I'm fine with what's working, whatever. My next question is, how much money was spent on the Bryden Fire Station projects? And what's that money gonna do now that that project has been canceled?
So, I'm gonna just give you an estimate, but, just south of a million bucks, which includes the purchase of the land, so what can we do with that money now? There's about six and a half million dollars sitting in the Building Reserve Fund that was set up a few years ago, and citizens passed an initiative, ten years ago approximately, says, we can't transfer money from one fund to another, so that fund is sitting in the Building Reserve Fund, and that's where it's gonna stay.
Yep.
So someone had sent me an email asking if we could do a property tax rebate, can't do that, we got an initiative, said we can't do that, but, if, some of you here may have been at the meeting, but we have, and it was brought up by someone earlier, we have a list this long of deferred maintenance at the city of Lewiston, and so it kind of gets back to taking care of what we've been entrusted with, and so, I don't think there's any shortage of where we can spend some money to fix some things that need fixing, so that we can stop the bleeding, right? So, some examples of that might be Fenton Gym, where the roof needs to be fixed, the longer we ignore that, the more damage it gives, cost of the building, more money we have to spend to fix it. Fire Station Four, it's not gonna go away, and we were told by Chief Michaelbus, there's some health and safety issues up there, and so I will promise you that we're going to look at spending some money to fix those, it'll come out of that Building Reserve Fund. If there's a life and safety issue at that fire station, it's incumbent on this council to address it, not to push this off onto the next council or the next administration, we're not gonna do that, so you'll see us spend some of that money, but over time, it's probably prudent to, you know, have some monies available so you can address those kind of things, you know, in the future, so, but, where that balance is gonna go in the future, I don't know, but we have a long list of things to look at, and that was presented at a work session.
So do you have plans to sell that property, or what is the city gonna do? Because as we're all talking about generating taxes here, and, and the tax base, somebody could privately own that land and contribute to the tax base, whether it be another gas station, or a mini mart, or another dental office across the street from that dental office, if, if you guys are not holding that land and you sell it to somebody privately, then that would generate tax revenue for the city.
So that has not, that, as far as just combashing that whole project, has not yet come to council, so, at that point then, we would know, I guess, what happened, but as far, I can't speak for the future, how that will get voted on.
So you guys just voted to no longer support the contract?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
But, if I can just quickly speak to that, it hasn't come up, but, I, I feel, along with the deferred maintenance, and, and if anybody, you know, and again, the three o'clock meetings aren't easy to get to, you'll see me run in because I'm late, because my day is crazy, but in that particular meeting, when we talked about that deferred maintenance, you saw, I mean, we own a lot of buildings, there's a lot of things that I would like to see, like, do we have assets that we're not using and are bleeding us because we're having to maintain them, or they're, we're, we're having issues in, in those buildings or on that piece of property? We, I think it is very fiduciarily responsible, that was not the right word, but we're gonna run with it, for us to look at and say, are we being good stewards with what we have? And is consolidation a priority? So, I, those conversations are, aren't, aren't being had, because we can't meet without breaking, you know, open meeting law, but I think our conversations with community members, that stuff is getting out, we've got to figure out how to get it in front of you guys, so that you're seeing it, and so I, I, I want you to know that for me, that is a priority, i- is this asset something that is an asset, or is it becoming more of a liability?
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next one was, it's kind of been lightly discussed, you guys have already talked about looking into departments and asking them what they can kind of trim the fat off of, I appreciate that. Briefly, this morning, before I came in, I was able to find the salary chart for the city employees on your guys' website, and from what I could compare to average salaries across the state, I didn't go city size or anything like that, I just threw out, just searched an average salary in the state of Idaho compared to what City of Lewiston's paying. For example, I know the Parks and Recs Director's making over a hundred thousand dollars a year, that's at least twenty-five percent higher than anywhere else in the state, I don't know how long he's been doing his job, or what he does to earn that kind of money, and from every other salary I was looking at, it kind of was all inflated pretty high. Have you guys looked into making that tough call and saying, hey, guys, you're getting too much money, we gotta cut you, I mean, I know that's a bad situation to be in, but it's business, the city is a business, you guys have employees, you pay benefits, you run a business, and tough decisions gotta be made.
I'll go first, so I have requested from both the HR department, job descriptions of the directors and managers to review, you know, our, our, what's, what are they in charge of, what, what are their duties, and then I have a fifteen-year lookback on my desk right now of what were our employee numbers at fifteen, and the reason why I chose fifteen puts us right back at that last recession, right? And then our growth moving forward, so, and, you know, and doing those comparables, and I think that, I think you're right, are we efficient there too? We've, it's hard to get seasonal workers, so have we increased full-time staff to counteract that, and are we using those positions efficiently? I'm ready to have those hard conversations. I, I expect that if you're a director, that department falls on you, and you should be presenting to us, when you, let's just say it, six-figure salary, I want a six-figure presentation and all the data that I need to make the right decision, that's what I expect from those directors, and I think, to, to the mayor's credit, we voted on a contract in the last meeting to clean this library, that removes a, a, another employee, and we're gonna pay a company that comes in and does it, and we can monitor, and we can say, you're not doing it, and we can move on and rebid and get that contract. If we can get services that are privatized, that lessen our liability and lessen our financial load, I think that's where some of what the mayor has presented to us, and then, and our job as a council, the support, and what way those of, you know, where, where should we go with our staff count and, and those responsibilities, and, you know, we've reorganized once, not to say that it can't happen again, to make sure we're, we're being efficient, so, I, I'm with you, I, I think we have to have very hard conversations moving.
Uh, the last one has to do with the Bryden expansion, I, the URA, Urban Renewal Act or whatever, how is that funded, and, is it actually a necessity at this point, or is it just a want? Like, are we just wanting to expand it because it's gonna ease traffic, which everybody does thirty and a thirty-five on that road anyways, or can that funds be moved to something more important? Because I have no idea how much that project's gonna cost, but it is gonna be expensive for one, and two, I'm assuming it's eminent domain, if you guys are cutting into people's front yards, or if you've offered them fair market, I don't know.
I can address some of these. Eminent domain's not gonna fly in Nogus County, I can tell you that straight up, and that is part of the problem right now, is, is getting fair market value to the people that do own some furniture that's gonna be affected by the widening of the road. From a safety standpoint, I will say this, you know, we'll get the three biggies, everybody's, you know, we've all talked about, actually, we've talked about two today, Twenty First Street, Bryden, and right here, the Ninth and Main Street, both of them going to the bridge, I mean, pipes well over a hundred years old. You take each one of those preliminary numbers, probably talking about twelve million each, the URA's not funding the whole Bryden Avenue thing, the URA is kind of an avenue that uses tax incremental finance thing to, to kind of help that, maybe cover the federal grants, you know, the match that we're required to have. I will say this, on Bryden Avenue, the number one accident in Lewiston is Fifth and Bryden, the number two intersection for accidents is Seventh and Bryden, number three is Sixteenth and Twenty First, right in front of Rogers, number four, Tenth and Bryden, and number five is Thane and Bryden. Obviously, we have a problem with Bryden Avenue, and I'm talking just raw data, I'm talking about necessarily severity of, you know, incidents, but the occurrence. And I got that from, data from Sean Stubers before he left, and we went over it, and that's, nothing's changed.
So I, I get that, I understand, I mean, data's data, but how is widening and adding more lanes of traffic gonna reduce accidents?
You'll reduce the queue, when you see that people are backed up from halfway on the five-hundred block all the way to the stoplight at Seventh and Bryden, and at certain times of day, that's how far back they're stacked up, somebody's on the phone, gotta send that text or whatever, and pretty soon, you got three rigs sitting over there in the ditch, all pulled over to the side because three of them have been involved.
Yeah, but adding an extra lane necessarily won't get away from somebody being on their cellphone and running in the back of somebody.
No, that, I, I understand, that's a behavioral issue with driving, but when you've cut the queue in half, I think urgency goes away.
It's fair enough, I get it. Uh, the last thing I had was just kind of a closing statement, not really a question, but you can feel free to comment if you want. In the end, government's not gonna close, you guys aren't gonna go bankrupt, you'll always figure out some way to keep the city running, so by voting against this fee increase, people were simply making you guys make that hard decision, that you all volunteered to be here to make, and we forced you guys to get on the council, and I know sometimes it's a thankless position to be in, so instead of passing the buck and taking more money from people, just do the right thing, start making necessary cuts to bring your house in order, that's all we ask, thank you.
What's the fee increase you're talking about there?
All the fee increases, the, got the water fee increase, you got the stormwater fee increase, you guys want a franchise fee increase, these are, these are just taxes, you guys aren't calling them taxes, you're calling them fees, but essentially, it's just a tax.
Well, let me make a comment about franchise fee, because it's been brought up a couple of times here, franchise fees, of course, are assessed on the public service provider, in this case, a Vista, a Vista does not pay- A Vista does not pay any monies to the City of Lewiston to operate within our right-ofway, and they put wear and tear on our system.
According to your guys' website, you pay one, they pay one percent already.
That's us.
No, listen to what I'm saying. A Vista pays nothing to operate in our right-ofway. So, instead, we sign a franchise agreement with their, we just signed it, so fifty-year agreement. And as part of that agreement, they agree to collect a franchise fee. The city asked them to collect it on their behalf, and then, we use those monies for our streets program. And they, they don't have to get right-ofway permits, they don't have to get easement permits, they don't have to do other things that contractors may have to do. So, that's kind of the trade-off on there. And that fee has not increased since nineteen ninety-nine. And we know that the cost of maintaining our roads has gone up significantly since nineteen ninety-nine. And so, if what they're doing in the right-ofway is causing any wear and tear on that system, and those costs are coming up, if we don't pay for it from those fees, we have to pay for it from other revenue sources, such as property taxes. So, that's why we're looking at that franchise fee as a way to recover some of those costs, and it puts it onto everyone that has, that benefits by Vista's services.
Yes. And I understand the process. But, it's still a tax. And to go from one percent to three percent, which I believe is the max in the state, it's three percent according to state law. You guys also put out a PA with information on it on your guys' website the other day, and it brought up cities like Post Falls, and Moscow, and what their franchise fees are versus their population. And Post Falls, we've all probably been there, is beautiful. They've got great roads, everything's awesome, and they're paying one percent. So, you guys are coming out the gate at three. According to the document released by the city, it says one percent, Post Falls.
Let's keep something, let's keep, I haven't spoken today. First of all, I apologize for not being here earlier. I'm sorry I was late. But, let's keep one thing in mind when we start looking at different places around the state. There is no city, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that has topographical challenges that we have, whether it's roads. I mean, I would, I thought this the other day, if I was just going into a business and I wanted to start something, I'd start a brake business in this town. We have so many hills up and down, that has to do with roads, you talk about Twenty-first, why do you think it's such a problem? Because it's up and down. We have topographical issues with roads, surfaces, with stormwater, that's a huge issue. They don't have the same issues that we do. The same thing goes for, look at any of the other things that we deal with, the water issues that we have right now. We wouldn't have those if this was a flat place. If this was Nampa, we wouldn't have these issues. So, keep that in mind whenever we're talking about these things that are costing us, it's, I'm not gonna call it apples and oranges, but it's not quite the same. We have the most challenging infrastructure in the state. I'm just gonna lay that out there.
And we'll have to agree to disagree on parts of that. And I understand, and I appreciate the comment, thank you. But, like, City of Orfino gets water the same way as everybody else does, pulls it out of the river, recycles it, cleans it, goes through the sewer system, they recycle it, pump it right back into the river, we pull it out, we get it from wells. They're just as topographical as everybody else around here, we're all living in the valley. But, you gotta base things off of population. You have to base things off of taxes. We are one of, if not, the highest taxed city in the state of Idaho. And what do we have to show for it? That's why everybody's so frustrated.
Let me come back to the franchise fee, okay? So, we can fix that road with property taxes or franchise fees. What would you like us to do?
Divert funds that are being wasted to pay for the stuff that needs to be fixed.
What funds are being wasted?
Salaries that are overpaid, buildings that we don't need to maintain, there's lots of things that are being, money thrown at that we shouldn't be throwing money at.
Well, that's okay, but let's talk about the roads. If you say to lower the salaries, that doesn't fix the road.
It, well, that's true. But, we've all been paying property taxes that maintains roads. And none of the roads have been being maintained since I've lived in Lewiston since two thousand thirteen.
Costs are going up, and that's what we're trying to address.
Costs on everything goes up, but people finding ways, other cities and other states aren't raising taxes on their people to pay for the stuff. Why are we paying more than everybody else, and they all have nicer things than we do?
So, a couple of things, so if you want to talk about franchise fees, if we are at a competitive disadvantage with Coeur d'Alene or Moscow that charges three percent and five percent on their franchise fees, they don't have to capture those funds from the property taxes. We have to take it from the property taxes today. So, that means that we have to have a higher property tax rate. When you look at some of the other cities in the state, we have to be careful how we do that, because some of them, for example, have fire districts or road districts, and it's not reflected in their levy rates. So, when you say compare this town to this town, we have to see just exactly what's included in those levies. It's not straight up. Ours are the highest in the state, we can't argue with that, that's a true statement. But, then, we have to get back to looking at what that's paying for. We're like a full-service city, if you will. Everything is on that levy. But, you go to some other cities, they have different districts to help pay for those things, cemetery, fire, road, and all those things. So, if you go add all that back into that, and then, we start comparing those things, then, we'll have a better, I think, idea of really how bad things might be.
Yeah, fair enough. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for having this session and being so forbearing. This is my first time. I learned a lot here today, a whole lot. But, I'm basically here to represent a number of my neighbors who are all elderly, and it's about the water. And mostly, what I'm here for is to get clarification, because everybody's got a different rumor. Everything from, the police are gonna come around and fine you and put you in jail if you violate the hand-watering. So, I'd like to know more about, we've read the mandate in the paper, and we understand that, but we, what we're looking for now is, what is the current status of it? I live up in Cypress, just south of Stewart, in the, where all those condos are, by North Forty. And I, they're all elderly people in my homeowners association. In fact, almost every one of them is over eighty. And they're, I counted the shrubs in just my part, I'm in a duplex, and just my part of it, there's forty shrubs and a couple of older trees. And I started hand-watering, and I couldn't maintain it. And it's getting hotter and drier, we're gonna have record-breaking temperatures coming up, and that's only gonna get worse, so everybody's very worried. I have a neighbor who's now got an oxygen sat of eighty-eight, and she's gotta be on oxygen all night. She's a little eighty-some-odd-year-old person struggling, and she can't water her yard or her, and we're not so much talking about grass, but we're talking about the shrubs. And there's several aspects of the shrubs that are near the house. If they dry out, they're gonna become a hazard, a real hazard. And so, that's a big worry right now. And some of the people think that maybe we should revisit it, because it was pretty draconian, you just had flat-out none. Living Waters came around and turned off our meters without our even knowing it. And that's fine, it was supposed to be off on a certain date, they made absolutely sure that's probably a liability thing on their part for doing that. But, I guess the question is, is there any room for latitude? Do you know what you, what I can bring back to them, what I can say? I do know some people now wanna do some sprinkler systems or set it up. They're very conscious of the fact that we've gotta save some water. I mean, we wanna do that, but what are the, what does she, what can I tell her? What can I say to her? Because she's either faced with her shrubs in her yard dying, and the amount of money that would be put into the hundreds of shrubs that are in our area alone, we're not gonna get compensated for that if they do die. So, there's all these questions, and they've been asking me, and I said, well, I come down here and try and get some answers.
Well, thank you for coming here today. I appreciate that very much. What I can tell you, a couple of things, earlier, we heard a comment about trying to push water from Lloyd. We do have that ability. My understanding is it's about two-hundred thousand gallons a day, so it doesn't, it's not gonna save the world, but we take advantage of that when we can, versus the millions when we have peak demand in the summertime, especially when it starts to warm up. The Public Works Department is monitoring the wells. There was also a comment about well number seven up there on Nesperse Grave. We're fortunate that that well is up and running. Had we not had that, we'd be in dire straits. So, that well is operating fully, and the Public Works Department is monitoring all the well sites across the city. And they are, with these new restrictions, I think they're probably learning a few things, too, because they look at daily consumption, they can read meters and things like that. And where they can find opportunity to make adjustments to that schedule, they're going to do that. I can't tell you where that might be at this time, but I know that they're actively monitoring this system, and they will make adjustments when they can and where they can. With regards to your statement about, you know, law enforcement or something like that, there are city employees that are out in the city, as I understand, that are trying to work with our neighbors, our customers, and provide information on the water restrictions and why they're necessary. And when they come across somebody who's using waters in a pressurized system that they're not supposed to, they'll leave a notice on there, and there's information on their, on what to do. But, yes, that is happening. I'm not aware of any fee, penalty, if you will, having been imposed as of yet, but it is in the code, if it comes to that. The city has that in their code ordinance, ordinances or laws that was passed by a previous city council. If this city council wants to change that, they can do that. But, that's what it says today.
Something about code about being arrested, though.
My basic question is, what can I tell her, and what can I tell the people who feel that there should be some compromise, not this all or nothing? You have to experience the hours it takes hand-watering, and it's not necessarily the most efficient. In fact, it's been shown that it's less efficient. And people don't know how to water themselves. I mean, we've been relying on Living Waters, and it's sort of a contractual thing. We bought the houses as condos because we've moved away from homes which were high maintenance, and that's exactly why we live there. And Living Waters was gonna take care of the watering situation for us. That's been taken away from us. And so, what do we do? I mean, is there a way that some of this can be relaxed, a little bit compromised a little bit, instead of sort of an all-or-nothing thing? Like, for instance, could you try maybe a watering schedule that was not near as high as it was, because you have nine millions, you know, nine million gallons you're trying to account for? But, try and figure out a way that can keep the shrubs alive and maybe help out the elderly. I mean, this is not our doing to get in this situation, but we're paying for it in many ways. And so, that's, I guess that's what I wanna be able to go back to them and say, well, it isn't as bleak as it seems, that there's, there might be some compromises, because there might be sprinkler systems that can be done that aren't like the big ones that we have hooked up to Living Waters. Those are huge. But, like, your own hose, setting it up so you can't, it's impossible for us to stand there, it's impossible for me to stand there and water forty of those shrubs, you know, every single day, or even twice a week. I've already got pain coming up into my shoulder from holding on to this hose and trying to get the water, and I'm in good shape compared to some of the others. And then, what's gonna happen that I worry about is I've already seen signs of people that are going to so-called cheat, because they're gonna set up a sprinkler, you know, to water. And I don't blame them, I don't think they're gonna be wasting water, they may be using the water more efficiently by what they're doing. Because everybody's conscious, we wanna, we wanna play the game with you, you know, we wanna be cooperative. We don't want to have the fire station not have enough pressure for, you know, fighting fires. But, on the same token, if all our bushes start dying, and they will, because we're gonna, the temperatures, you know what it's gonna be like coming up, then that's a hazard in itself. And I'm not talking about just lawns, I'm talking about the shrubberies and the perennial plants and all the other things that people have invested a great deal in, and it makes it livable there.
I would just, the most recent update that I've heard from the Public Works Director is that they are, what, the reason why it started when it did was that, based on historical weather, was that we could, with the, everybody just stopped, was that we could gather some data to get to that, what you just said, can we move to a watering schedule? Can we do those things? So, we've asked that we get at least weekly updates, see whether there's no change or not. And the last report that I received was that it was looking good.
Well, that was because, I'm sorry to interrupt, but when we read in the paper that you, that it said, things are looking better, there hasn't been as much water used, we laughed, because it was because it rained solid for a week, and the weather's changed now.
Right, but, what that, and again, that was, the paper didn't quite, yes, and that was brought up, that yes, we were getting rain, but what the data was telling was the use of pressure. So, it's not necessarily the efficiency, it's that within our water system, we have, I think somebody brought it up, our pipes aren't, you know, brand-new, they're not maybe the size they need to be because of our city's growth. It's the pressure that not having that redundancy that the reservoir gave us that allows for everything to work like it should. So, it's not that you're overusing water, it's that those system pressure creates issues within the system. But, so, within that data, rain or not, they're gathering that data to figure out where can we start placing and relaxing that as well. And then, and if somebody wants to add to that, because again, it's hard to keep all that in my brain, and so, hopefully, there's more information on here. But, I would just, if you would wait, I'd like to speak to you. I'm working with a group of people, and we wanna come help.
Yes, because I think there's quite a few people that are here just because of that issue. And so, I wanted to make sure, if anybody here wants me to say something else, did I represent you well?
You also direct those people to, our city email as well, so they can email us, and we can also address those through email, too, if we're not able to answer all their questions or to think of something at a later date.
Yes, yes, I can tell them that there's an email, and is there a name that?
Yeah, if you go into the city website and you look at, it's a council, city council. And then, it'll pull up your city council members, and it'll have all their emails there, and they can write us all, write us one of us, you know, we're there, so.
All right, I appreciate that.
If you would wait, and my offer to visit on that is not city-related, but when we visit, I can actually just, we'll write, we'll write those emails down for you.
Yeah, that would be, that would be very helpful.
Oh, yeah, that works, too.
Because right now, there's a lot of angst, a lot of worry, a lot of fear, lots of things going on in the whole neighborhood, and I've been getting it, and I said, and the other thing was, like somebody else said, not everybody gets the Tribune. And I happened to read the Tribune and see that little blurb about this big in the paper that there was this meeting today, but nobody else seemed to know about it. And so, that, we need more than that. I mean, I know this was kind of an impromptu, it seemed like, meeting, but that's why I came for their sake, because I knew they didn't even see it in the paper, or they hadn't even read the paper yet this morning.
Ma'am, I do have a question.
Yes.
It's Living Waters, have, do they provide drip system to your infrastructure at all?
No, unfortunately, our sprinkler systems are fairly dated, so the lawn has one kind of system, it's not very efficient, and I'm not talking about the lawn, if it was just the lawn we were worried about, but like I said.
Yeah, I'm not worried about lawn.
But, the other thing is the shrubs, and that's really important. And what I would suggest is, what we could do is, each one is separate, so it's shrub, lawn, front yard, shrub, lawn in the backyard. And maybe just forego the lawn part of it, because that's where the water gets really used up, and just have the shrubs. Some compromise like that would be huge.
It's the fact that your system is charged, so with sprinklers, it doesn't, it would take too much to shut everything down if we had a fire.
Or a catastrophe.
Something catastrophic. So, you cannot have all of those units charged, but if it was a drip system, you might wanna talk to Living Waters, and if they can convert those to drip, you can use a drip system, but you cannot use the sprinklers, because it's too much water charged all at one time.
But, that's exactly, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's exactly what I'm saying. You could turn off half of it, that's the way our meter works.
But, that, there's still, there's still, there's still sprinklers, and it's charged differently than a drip system. So, you can use a drip system if, you know, and shut off all of the rest of them, and then, use a drip system. You might wanna talk to Living Waters to see if that can be done.
What if people sort of set up their own drip systems? That's not how. That's not hand watering.
Yes. You can use a drip system.
Because I was thinking about that myself.
I've even actually offered someone that called me, very distraught, an older lady, and I offered to go help on my own time, not city council related, but to go help set up a drip system if needed. Fear of disabilities, I was unable to do that.
So just, I'm sort of slow in understanding this thing about the Living Waters types thing being charged. They turned it off.
They turned it off, but if it had a drip system.
But what I'm getting at is if they turned it off, how is that, I mean, it's just a switch on my meter to just put it on off. I can turn it back on when I get home if I wanted to.
Right.
But it doesn't mean it's going to be running. You have to program it to run. And so all I'm saying is, instead of running all those, just run one.
No, it doesn't work the same way.
Okay, okay.
The drip system would be totally different.
I know the drip system's different, but I'm just, what you're saying that the meter is all or nothing, right?
I do think Hannah will be able to answer some of those questions in more detail, like you said, too.
Yeah, maybe splitting hairs. One last thing, I don't want to take up everybody's time, and this has to do with the community park. And I'm really glad to see that the pie in the sky is not going to happen, probably. It was not realistic, and it didn't allow for traffic and all sorts of other issues. It's enough to absorb the school and what's going on there. But then, the bike path is an issue for me. I hike over there, and it just got, to me, it kind of got out of control. And what I'm talking about is oversight. I'm all for a bike path, but this one was being built and the city hasn't really, I don't know if anybody's, and a grant was given to them for additional work on it. And I'm just going to do this and tell a story. I was walking down the trail, and I heard a biker in back of me, and if you've ever seen the bike path, you see all those scary, I mean, there, it's, I was a safety officer for a long time. And, and there's no, there's no monitoring of, you know, there's no control. And so if you see those jumps, I don't know if anybody else has been aware of them, but they're very dangerous, extremely dangerous. They're only for really skilled people. And there were no, there was no signage. So I'm walking down, and here, right below, and you know, these steep canyons are part of that bike path, steep, steep canyons. And here comes a boy, and he was about twelve years old, barreling down the hill, and he was headed for this, and he couldn't see it. He didn't even know what he was headed for. And I turned my back on it, and I said, "Stop." waved my arms, and he skidded to a stop there. And I got, he got off the bike, and I said, "I want you to see where you were headed. You would have broken your neck." And he looked at me like this, and he said, "I would have died." And so that's, I'm just, that's my story. Somehow, there needs to be some oversight of how that thing's being developed and what's happened to it.
Thank you, that we did not aware of that. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello, my name's Ramon Royce. I live at the 2400 block of Sunset Drive, and we were, my family and I were dramatically impacted through the rupture of the high water reservoir. And so my question is, I went to the four o'clock meeting to use the emergency funds, and so in looking at it, the totality of the situation, I'm trying to wrap my head around using the exact same existing reservoir with a liner and a floating cover for the DEQ to meet those requirements, and why we wouldn't just completely, like, we retained Stan Tech and I believe a couple other engineers, highly skilled engineers. And they, and from my understanding, their recommendation was to completely tear it down. And so I'm, I'm like of the opinion, like, why don't we, we've taken this step, why don't we look at taking the high water reservoir out, completely out of commission and building something of the same or greater capacity?
Well, thank you. I think the best answer I can give you, you were at the meeting, is that we are trying to find a solution to get our reservoir back online, restore water service. We have to get our new water plant up and running. We've not been able to do that yet, and we need somewhere to pump that water, and that was the purpose for the high reservoir. It would go from that plant up to the high reservoir, and then it gets distributed out among the city. And the solution that they came up with is probably the quickest solution that we can do right now to get the, get the water system back online. We, I know that we are looking at other options, and I can't tell you what those all are because I wasn't in all those meetings. But there was a lot of questions about the structural integrity of that reservoir. And the engineers that we have on time, or have on site, IMCO that's been working on our water plant, they went up there and looked at it, and that's their expertise. And so we're working with the engineers, and if they tell us they can do it, then we're going to do it. The other options are that we would have to either put a new, like, I think, hard cover over that reservoir and/or completely rebuild the reservoir and the transmission lines associated with that, which is going to cost, I think, upwards of thirty million dollars to do that. And so the solution that we have out there, I know that it was, I think it was reported locally in our news that it was a twenty-year fix, and that's not accurate. The materials that we're using have a twenty-year warranty, but we will be actively looking for a more permanent solution. Part of that is funding. We have to have monies available. Some of the monies that we're going to tap into, they're loans, but they're forgivable. So as long as we meet certain standards, you know, requirements, then we have the opportunity to have some of those loans forgiven. So that would be good for the ratepayers. Otherwise, we're burning through our reserves right now, obviously. You know, we're spending a lot of money, and that's very unfortunate. So I continue to contact folks in Boise and our congressional staff in Lewiston, trying to find some other opportunities, maybe some unallocated monies that have been sent to the states, you know, throughout the last few years, to see if we can't tap into some of those funds and work towards a more permanent solution. I can't really tell anything more than that. That's as much as I know. But the goal is to have this up and running by the end of July, and I think that's as quick as we can get it. Part of that too is because we deal with supply chain issues like everybody else, and costs have gone up. And so we have to order this, then it has to be delivered. So one of the saving graces that we had is that IMCO was still in town, trying to get that reservoir up. If they had, you know, closed it out and left town, we'd have really been struggling to try to get somebody to come in and help us with this effort, because they'd be somewhere else. And then we'd have to be going through some kind of a bid process and try to get someone to come to town. So I mean, if there was a saving grace in it, that was one of them. And so we're just going to continue down that path as quickly as we can. A comment was made earlier about, you know, they don't, folks don't like living under a reservoir where we may have these same issues in the future. I understand that. I'm not the person to give you an answer on that today, but I think it's being looked at and talked about.
I appreciate that, especially because there's another lower reservoir just straight east of Sunset Park that's the same age. So that's something that's a concern for our community and where we're at. And I appreciate, Rick, you thinking of us and acknowledging that, and the significant damages that we faced that day. And so we're going over one hundred and ten days, and we just, we still don't have any answers, and I haven't seen anyone at our area to just say, "Hey, I totally understand the legal aspect as far as, like, you don't have to admit fault or anything, but it's like, the city of Lewiston owns those water reservoirs." And, you know, showing up and that face and just meeting us and saying, "Hey, I'm sorry for what you went through," and everything like that, because we suffered substantial damages that I don't know how we're going to recover from, is the short of that. So we haven't even, we filed our tort claim in due diligence and got requests and bids, and that's all with the city of Lewiston, and I'm sure it's with Travelers, because it's my understanding that once, once that tort claim is filed, it takes the city of Lewiston out of it and puts us directly in touch with Travelers Insurance, who's the insurance provider, and we haven't heard from them at all. So thank you for your time today and for having this venue. I appreciate it.
I will make another visit to the community Rick had asked us to do, so I will do that, and then check in with staff, make sure that we're doing everything we can to communicate with the neighborhood, let them know. We certainly feel, you know, the concerns that they're having to live with daily. You know, I understand, I think we all understand that. We're passionate that way. You can call the mayor's office, you know, anytime you need to. I'll tell you what I know about the process and where we're headed. I was going to make another comment about that reservoir. Now I can't remember what it was.
The access road.
I'm going to look at the access road. There was something else tied to that reservoir that somebody said earlier, and I apologize, I'm having a blank on it. But yeah, please, contact my office anytime. I'm there full-time. Council, many of them are busy at their day jobs, and I'm happy to share with you anything that I can.
I'd love to go look with you, Mayor. Tell me the time I can.
Well, I'm going to call Council of Boysman to come with me.
I would like to go, too.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Royce.
Time is precious, so.
Very much.
Thank you.
No way that I can use this without lowering it from that.
You get to see how many different height people we have.
He could be on my basketball team. My name is Paul Bowen. I live in Lewiston on Seaport Court and been here for ten years. One of the things that, not one of the things, the major thing that I've been doing for the last year is trying to figure out why Lewiston is the Isstak City in the state of Idaho. It is. And it's not because we have hills, I can promise you that. So I'm going to not do, we've talked about a lot of stuff, and I appreciate you guys coming today. It's your Saturday, too. Appreciate all the things you guys do. But, but what I do is get a lot of facts. I do compare us to other cities. They, we all have hills, we got water, we got desert, we got, everybody deals with their own problems, so that's not one of them. I've got the actual tax per capita for the top ten cities in the state of Idaho. And, but the average of that, of those taxes, it's three hundred and seventeen dollars per person, okay, per head. Lewiston, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars per head. It's not even, we're not even in the ballpark. We're not even close. So a couple of things that come to mind, this is data. I'll argue anybody about the data. So how do you fix it? What do you plan on doing? Because it can't continue. You guys are really at a disadvantage because you didn't do this. We had a guy named Alan Nygaard that put together a cabal that did this. You guys, though, the longer you do nothing to fix it, you're going to receive more and more and more blame for it when you didn't do it. But if you don't fix it, it's going to be no different than if you actually did it. So you need some idea and some direction, and I hope, Mayor, that they're getting it from you, because I have a hard time finding where you stand on anything, because you don't say. And that's what Nygaard did, but when we talk about a strong mayor, I would like to see you provide direction to this city if it's in line with what the taxpayers are looking for. And I haven't seen it yet. Is there a reason that you don't speak? I know you don't vote at the council meetings, but we don't know where you stand. Is it a fair statement that every single agenda item is supported by you before you give it to the council? Do they know that? I'm asking.
I want to answer a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Okay, that's not a fair assumption. I don't support everything that gets on the agenda, but I also don't try to control the agenda. Council should have the right to debate and vote on certain items, whether I support them or not. I put out budget messages, I put out articles in publications of the city, their print form, sometimes they go out on social media, sometimes on our website. I know that you frequently send emails to me, and I've responded to every one of those emails, and I've asked to meet with you and others at your request, and you have not taken me up on that. So I've not had that opportunity maybe to ask or answer questions that you may have about where I stand on certain issues. If there's a tie vote, then I do get to vote on some things. The last one was when I voted to authorize spending the thirty thousand dollars that was brought up earlier on the community park, because I felt it was very important that the citizens have all the information they need so they can make an informed decision, which includes telling them, as I said earlier, that this park, if passed, is not going to pay for itself. That will require additional property tax support. So people.
Yeah, I understand. The point is, the citizens don't know what direction you're providing to the city when you stay silent. How do we know? And how, for that matter, how does the council know if you're really behind something or not behind something at all?
Because they contact me, they talk to me, we email. The biggest policy decision we make on an annual basis is our budget.
Why doesn't the public hear what your position is on anything?
You can ask me, I'll tell you.
Why don't you?
Email me, people call me, email me. I go to lunch, I go to people's homes. Mr. Sager in the back will tell you that I.
Well, I'm not going to follow you around to the people you talk to.
Well, no. Because I'm out and about. I think Ms. Sadie would tell you that I respond to her emails and others.
Why don't you communicate with the public? And that's been brought up by a number of people. There's no way for you, we don't have a mechanism through the internet, for instance, through websites or through anything else to communicate. I really appreciate you guys being here today. This is your Saturday, I understand, and, but this is the first time this has ever occurred. Somebody had a good idea.
Paul, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What is a way that the mayor could get that information that you're saying that the public is wanting, as far as sharing his side, other than us?
I don't know that I have the answer to that. You know, I'm one of those old guys that doesn't get along with IT very much, but I tell you, just to find out about this meeting on your website, I think it's five or six or seven clicks.
Okay.
When it should be the first one. Meeting's an agenda, or something like, I mean, I don't know. But I don't like the idea of a silent mayor. We know where you guys stand, and I applaud, you guys work hard. You know, it's not easy to do this stuff. But if you go into a meeting and you don't know the position of the mayor, I don't know what way you're supposed to lean. And it's not totally objective. We thought we were electing a strong mayor versus Alan Nygaard, who is a city manager. But if we don't know where you stand and what your position is, how do we know where the city's headed? Well, we don't.
Well, there's some, there's some fair criticism in that, and I will accept that. But I don't think it's been completely, it's not, I'm not going to be able to reach out to every single citizen and tell them where I stand on everything. People know where to go get ahold of me. My personal cell phone number's public, and I take calls at all hours of the day. All hours of the day.
I know how to get ahold of you, but I don't know how to get an answer out of you.
Well, now you're being cute. Ask me a question.
No, I'm not being cute.
Yes, you are.
I'm being honest.
Ask me a question.
I'm being honest.
Ask me a question.
What exactly have you done, Mayor, to keep your campaign promises of reducing taxes? That was your number one campaign. I got a screenshot of, reduce taxes. What have you done?
We've lowered salaries, budgets, we've invested monies to create additional revenues.
Oh, you've spent money to reduce taxes?
Oh, how's that? You sent me a bunch of information on cities across the state of Idaho, and I took the very first city on your work, and you had a mistake in it. You underestimated property taxes by one-third. Is that true?
Do you know what I did yesterday?
Is it true?
Yesterday, Mayor, you're right. You caught me on, I picked the wrong, it's not easy to go online and go through everyone's budget. Meridian has over two hundred page. Meridian has over 200 pages of budget information, so you don't, and you were right. Yesterday, I talked to the finance director of the city of Meridian. So we're on the same page. And they do have a $45 million tax.
Mr. Bowen, can I just pause real quick? Mr. Counselor Cleaver needs to leave, so we just wanted, he's.
Thanks for coming.
Yes. I want to thank him for coming after his ordeal.
Getting better.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm going to stand up with my back.
So, anyway, to finish here as quick as I can, because this is probably longer than you guys wanted, what can we do? What can you do? And to make a difference? How are you going to cut taxes?
Okay, I'll give you a couple more examples. First of all, you admit that I read your emails and I respond to them. Your emails are not easy to get through. They're long and they're detailed, and I complimented you on that.
Yeah, no, I know that.
And I've gone through your work, because I'm interested in what you have to say. But let me give you some other examples. We've made changes in our travel policy, okay? It used to be if we sent two people, the boys, and each drove their car, they each got per diem. We don't do that anymore. We pay one per diem. You want to take your own car? You pay for it. I'm not paying two per diems. That's cutting taxes. I have lots of those examples.
I appreciate those things, and we don't see those things, Mayor.
We talk about them at city council meetings and budget meetings. You're welcome to attend any of them, Mr. Bowen.
Did we know where you stood on the fire station?
I didn't support it.
That's what I'm talking about. To be a strong mayor, do you think that you shouldn't communicate with the public? I mean, I'm not saying you don't totally. I'm just saying, there's a real lack of information that's coming out, and if you don't accept that, we won't fix it. I mean, what can we do?
I told you some of that. So let me, my comment on the fire station, Chief Michael blessed, I think, an incredible job of getting that information to us, and the cost of that fire station was getting to be too much. I told him and council members, we had $6.5 million in our building fund. I was not going to put $2 million into my budget next year to pay that additional $2 million. So if they voted for it, they're going to have to find the money.
Okay.
So I didn't support that, okay?
Yeah.
I said a couple minutes ago that some of your statements is fair criticism. I can always do a better job, and I accept that, and I'm willing to meet with people in the public. I get to work about 5:30 in the morning. You're welcome to join me.
Everything is not intended to be personal and a criticism of you.
I need you and others to help me get the word out.
I'm just saying, Mayor, that we don't get the information. I don't know whether a website is a better answer. You know, I know that you're communicating the way you feel is best, but it's not getting out. That I can't tell you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
As much as you'd like. Couple of things that I'd like to tell you guys. One is, and I'm going to get on to, how do you fix this? How do you reduce our taxes? Well, a tax cut, that surely would do it, but that's not going to be very likely. Your costs are going up, you talk about it all the time, but so are ours. We don't have slush funds sitting around that we can dip into and pay government more. We just don't. Our payroll's not going up. Doesn't happen. So, one of the easiest and absolutely most effective things you could do is a local preference for local contractors, a bid preference. And I'm talking 20%. You get these guys, and what it does is trigger what's well-known as the multiplier effect. A contractor like the one that's tearing down the old courthouse, he hires employees, they go out, do shopping, they end up buying homes, they buy cars, maybe even a boat, they raise families. That's our future. So you've got a couple of things. The bid preference for local contractors is the number-one. The multiplier effect, they think is, I mean, nobody will say it's less than four. Nobody. But it can be from four to 10 times the amount of money that you put of our tax money into this economy with local bid preference. We don't care about somebody up in Rath Room that's doing a $5 million replacement on their water main. That's great for Rath Room or for his personal family, I don't know. We don't care about the guy in Anacortes that's getting $5 million for a new reservoir. That's not doing us any good. There was a comment, I suggested that to somebody, and it got to our finance director who said, "No, we can't do that." There is no such thing as can't do that. And we get into these funds, and don't ever say there's no way that you can spend from, you can't just willy-nilly transfer money. But you can do emergencies, you can do a lot of things, plus you have a lot of things. The fire budget last year alone, this wasn't years ago, $6.5 million. Did you see that, Mayor, when you signed the budget? Or do you, please take one second and tell me how the budget works. Do the directors present the budget to you? Or do you give them just all together to somebody else? Do you take oversight of the individual department budgets?
Department directors present their budgets to me, and then I go over those budgets, and I set a budget, and then I present it to the council. Then the council has the opportunity to modify that budget.
Anyway, this local bid preference is the single biggest thing you can do. It's not political. If you don't do it, you're missing the boat. What it allows you to do is to spend, I don't know, 40, 50 million a year in this community and multiply it times four. That's the benefit you get. That's going to bring population in, that brings jobs in. But the next part, Lewiston has not had a 1% growth rate in decades, so far back that nobody wants to go that far. Not 1%, we can't hit 1%. So what are you going to do? One, I can suggest to you is, the city is probably the biggest landowner. Somebody, Mayor, needs to go, you could appoint him, I'm sure, and get you a list of every bit of developable land. I'm not talking about easements and rights-of-way ownership. Probably nobody knows going up a spiral highway, the city of Lewiston owns 160-acre parcel right there. But it's one of many. We own a lot of land. We need to get land in the hands of builders, or there's no place to move to in Lewiston, unless the Howards sell some more farmland.
Well, let me address a couple of things. Bid preferences, we have to follow state procurement laws. We have no choice on that. Secondly, we do do.
Wait, say that again? On the bid preference?
We have to follow state procurement laws. And so when you talk about a local bid preference, we're already doing that. I have told staff we are not going to go on the state.
If you're doing it.
Let me finish. I have told staff we're not going to go on the state contract to buy vehicles. I told them we are going to buy vehicles in Lewiston, Idaho. So that's what we do. We buy from our local automobile dealers, because they invest in our communities, they support our forage programs, they go to our churches, they do all these things, and that's what we do. So we're doing it. And then with the land.
But then don't tell me it's not legal.
What's that?
You just told me that state procurement law is prohibitive, but yet you're doing it for vehicles.
I don't have to go on the state contract. I'm allowed to do that by law.
And tell me what state, I gave you, at least provided to you, a letter by an attorney in Idaho Falls that says Idaho law not only does not prohibit local preference, it encourages local preference.
We have local preference in our state laws.
No, you don't, not with construction.
For certain things, we have a big preference.
Buying a couple of cars, come on, that's.
Well, I'm not here to argue with you. Let me talk about the 160 acres on the hill. Why do we own that land? Do you know?
No. It's never brought up. I don't know that anybody has ever done.
Yeah, I've tried to look at that land as a potential for selling in the past. It was originally purchased so that if we ever had to do something else with our wastewater, because the wastewater treatment plant's over there, that was our backup plan. If something went bad and we couldn't discharge, then we've got a place to put it.
I'm not saying that one itself. I'm just saying the city owns a lot of land.
And we are currently looking at those. We're looking at a piece of land on East Main Street to sell that. It's across the street from Elson Burrow. I think maybe one of the councils have been involved in that.
You and I can have some more conversations about that, and we will. I want nothing more than to see Lewiston be vibrant and grow and be a great place that it used to be for kids and moms and dads and families, and we're getting away from that because it's too expensive. But there are things that can be done. Let me tell you the last thing that I've got, and I'll make it quick. The 3% property tax max. What does that mean to you?
The 3% property tax what?
Limit.
Branches.
State of Idaho limit. Property tax limit, 3%.
You can increase your property tax base by 3%.
Doesn't say rate, it says, the statute says tax. But, so how much did you raise it? No, that was your budget. Your budget. Let me tell you how you do that. I'm on to the county, so let's just leave it at that. When you inflate your budget, last year, this year, you added $6.5 million for a fire station. Last year, you put $2.5 million in the same fire station. This year, at the end of '22, you had another $2.5, or $1.8 million budget surplus. We're talking about $9 million. That was all in your budget. So now when you come to 2023, guess how easy it is to balance with that inflated budget?
Well, you don't understand the budget, because that's not how it works, Mr. Bowen.
No, I do understand the budget. That's the problem. I'll argue budget with you on live stream in front of the public any day.
I will accept that.
Good. Schedule it. Schedule it. We'll do that. So, anyway, I asked the question, what's your, and the truth is, Lewiston and Nez Perce County base their 3% Idaho property tax limit on budget, not on tax. Every other city in the state of Idaho, every one, and if you don't believe me, I'll start showing you their preface to their annual report. The 3% limit is a limit on the hike in property taxes. You could never do a 35% hike, abiding by the 3%. You're applying it to budget, and I got an idea that you got that from our county, probably Mr. Havens. Let me tell you something. I'm going to tell you right now.
Okay, Mr. Bowen, I'm going to set a limit on this, because we've been going at this for a while. Others may want to speak, and we set the ground rules at the beginning.
Okay.
And this is going on. Would you agree we set the ground rules? So I'll give you one minute to close, and then we'll move to other folks.
Okay. I'll close in one minute. I have submitted a request to the Idaho State Tax Commission. One or two things has to happen. Either every other city in the state of Idaho is correct on the 3% max limit on increases to property tax, or Lewiston and Nez Perce County are correct, are the only two that think it's based on our budget. I have yet to receive a copy. You may get contacted. I don't know what the Idaho Tax Commission is going to do. But if they decide that all of the rest of this city's correct, and you and the county are not correct, I don't know what they'll do. I'm just telling you, we're going to take that route now. I've informed them, I need an answer. They promised in three business days, now it's been a week. And then I'll go to the Attorney General, and then I'll go to a private lawyer. One or the other has to be the standard in the state of Idaho. We can't have two.
Thank you.
And ours is 35% higher than everybody else.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your time and.
So, I'm going to, we have a couple more folks to speak, but I'm going to say that we are going to officially, so that I can let folks in the AV room end this meeting at 12:30, because we committed, this is our Saturday, we committed until 12 o'clock today, and it's now going on 12:30, and I need to release people. This is their day off. Yes, sir?
Hello, my name's Mark Gavitt. I'm at 1118 Burl. I like Roundabout. In fact.
Sorry, we can't hear you. Thank you.
In fact, it's good to see you again, Rick. I'm glad I came down here. You look just like your dad, I can't believe it. Anyway, I'm at 1118 Burl. New Roundabout's great, because the 1,000 block, the 1,100 block, and the 1,200 block is extremely busy. And in those three blocks, we got Orchard Elementary, we've got school crossing zones, we've got a church, all kinds of residents with apartments, Burt Street, Burl Street Station, the A-plex there, Boys and Girls Club. Roundabout slows a lot of traffic down, it keeps things in an even flow. In fact, I'd like to see some more speed limit signs up there, 25 miles an hour. When you got Lewiston pretty mixed, and a bunch of the construction workers with full dump trucks going through that school zone, dangerous. The kids come across Thane and A and B Foods, that's dangerous, because people, there's no sidewalk running in there, people trying to get in and out of the store, it's chaos. The grocery store's got the big garbage can there. Of course, kids like to get right in that garbage can when they're walking down, the Boys and Girls Club. It's a pretty good path there, activity before and after school. So, thank you for the Roundabout. I would like to see one in every intersection through there, just like they do got up here on that same street Bush lives on. That was an excellent move, to slow people down. So, I just wanted to come down here, because I know there's been a lot of negative things about that. And then I'm going to finish up with, after hearing some of this stuff down here, I appreciate what you folks are doing, and I really appreciate your patience dealing with some of this. My God. So with all that saying, is I want to get down to some small ball. The Coven Force could do a little more work. That rooster up there on 10th and Cedar is driving me nuts. We live in paradise, but don't take the apple off the tree. We can have chickens, but the old roosters. See what happens? Job well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
For the record, the turkeys and any roosters, I volunteered to take care of any of those birds. I just don't know that it would be legal.
It's not open season yet.
Eric Peterson, Lewiston, Idaho. I was watching you on live stream. And by the way, to the individuals saying they're not available information, the city does an amazing job on all these meetings that are on live stream. Immediately after the meeting is over, within a minute, the archive is there for you to review. So if you really want and can't go there, every one of them's there. So, get up a little bit on IT and you'll get the information you need. I have been around Lewiston for a long time, since the '60s. I have gone through many city administrations, working as a lawyer and being disabled and working with the city. I have always been and considered myself in a partnership as a citizen of Lewiston with each of the councils. I will say that the issues that you're dealing with arose from not just the last council, the last city administrator, it goes back decades. And the real problem we've had is the two-to-four-year look forward. I don't care about the 20-year plans, 40-year plans. Realistically, they don't exist when you've got people who are being elected and have concerns about being reelected. So, we had a kick-the-can-down-the-road attitude for years. Bud Van Stone, who was an engineer, pointed this out to folks a lot of times, very practical man. It happened that, yeah, people wanted it down the road. It happened with every council I am aware of, except a few times, when they just took a stand and actually planned ahead. This council, I will say with the new mayor, I am watching a real change in attitude. They're getting into the 20-year ahead. They're getting into how do I fund this at the cheapest cost for this process? If I'm coming in here as a business, and by the way, the easiest way to change that per capita thing is to grow the number of people. And we aren't doing that, because are we actually a very appealing community? No, in a lot of ways. I've worked for economic expansions, I know the multipliers, I've worked with the people that do the multipliers. You get those 12 ships coming in, probably about an $80 million for the value on an annual basis. annual basis. But my real point is, I consider myself a partner and I have worked with the city in a lot of things and they're doing a great job. I think Dan's doing an amazing job. His ability to stay there and respond is fantastic. Each of the, you have a diversity of thoughts and processes. They are engaging, they are discussing it, they're coming to decisions that I feel the citizenship is it. You've got a say in the matter, you got to vote. If you don't like, think you're getting enough information, vote. Now, key point, I've been working for about, probably a year, on getting back to something called My Lewiston. It was an app that was on the former operating system. Wonderful. It allowed me to engage with the city in a timed manner where I could actually make there's bushes growing over a sidewalk. That doesn't matter to most people, but I now have to go out into Thane Road because I've got bushes on the road, sidewalk. I just take a picture, put it in the My Lewiston app, says sidewalks, do this. It was reported. I got a response. And then I got a follow-up. And then I got, it's been completed. That happened, there's a switchover so that we no longer have that app, may change our operating system. I've been talking to the mayor, to the person who I think is doing a superb job, and that's your Public Works Director, Dustin Johnson. He is making decisions, he's operating a timeline factor that is appropriate, the city council's working with him. I've been amazed at the response and the working with it. Good job. I would like to have that in the budget, maybe $50,000, to get a return of that My Lewiston app. I use it in DC when I'm out there because I advocate for rare disease things. It's wonderful. Same thing, they have it, identical to what we have here. I see responses in DC to claims I've made. This walk light's not working. The next day, it works. Potholes there, it's gone. Right? Yeah, they probably have more, they're an expensive city. We, it's not like you think. They know how to operate and actually fund and they have a lot of other things now. But their basics, the infrastructures, yeah, they do. You guys are doing a good job. I'd like to see the franchisees pass because you want to fund things. I was on a bus ride yesterday where the guy was a little late, so he's going a little fast and I crossed several intersections where the road maintenance has been delayed. I'm bouncing literally, if I hadn't been strapped down, two or three inches in the air. So focusing on the streets, thinking 20 years down the road, taking that future cost away from the people that we owe a duty to because we got paid from our ancestors and we're kicking it down the road, saying someone else got to pay for it. Anyway, you're doing a good job, appreciate it done. I really liked your format. Do it again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Todd, did you want to close this out? All right, Todd will be our last-
Our last word.
Yeah, and then we'll adjourn after that.
Okay. I won't pray. You might see my name on Facebook. Would you say that's accurate? Okay. So I happen to be in IT. I happen to be in IT from way back when they started what they call Apple Computer. Oh, yeah, right. And I happen to watch him cruise down the road and try to get on that, that bus over there. I feel for you. I don't think passing that is the right thing and I'll tell you why. I think Dr. Phil might, ironically, you might want to check out CBS and, you know, type in CBS.com space Todd to see what comes up. I want to thank everybody. I was blown away when y'all come down here and I see this on Facebook. I see it happening. I've been here for a while. I know a lot of people in this town don't agree with me, but I see it coming up. I see the fact that y'all put up with stuff that you probably shouldn't. We have a former judge in here trying to help our community. We got it going on, guys. And I'm going to tell you the one thing that I learned after sitting down with Mr. Johnson, how to fix it. We have a balance. We have homeowners over here, we have business owners over here, and guess what? Homeowners are charged because there's no business. We got nobody here to put us going forward. Thank you. And on the last thing I have to say, get the time, go out to Hell's Gate State Park, you'll see this big, huge canoe that's sitting in there. You get in that thing and you remember why I'm here. Because I was on that trail, I went from this town all the way to the ocean, come back to this town, took that canoe, trucked it over the mountain, that canoe went in the water in Livingston, Montana, all the way to St. Louis. What does that remind you of? The Lewis and Clark Trail. And you've got millions of people out there coming to this valley at 8% increase. So what you got right now, you got an 8% increase of people coming and it's coming soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd.
Can I make one more comment?
Councilor Lick, and then we'll adjourn.
Before we adjourn, I, thank you, but I just wanted to make a quick reminder, we have three council seats open. You can contact Carrie Ravencroft if you're interested. We need voices, but also, and, and to reiterate that the mayor has a sign-up sheet, we have an open position on the URA board. Trying to think of some other ones, but we have open positions and we, we like when there's a diverse language in that room and point of view. And when we struggle to see no change, it's because the same people keep coming to the table. So I would just encourage that you put your name in that. You know, we've, we've seen people put in applications and then they remove themselves and I get it, life gets in the way, but I'd love for there to be new faces when I walk into a commission or, or our subcommittees. It's, it's nice to see, it's nice to hear that breath of fresh air and those new ideas. So just once again, three open positions on Lewiston City Council.
Councilor Towlesley, do you have a word before we adjourn?
I do and I appreciate everybody that came out. You saved me from being out in the sun doing garden work this morning.
Oh, okay.
I would offer, I would also mirror what Councilor Lick said, get involved in the, in the committees and the commissions and the things that are going on within the city. There's a lot of information out there. You just, you have to, you have to be able to access it. And if you don't know how to access it, then you contact somebody, you contact us. If you can't, if you don't know how to get a hold of some particular part of the, of this, I had a, a young man, I was at a, a reception and he was disabled and he said he wanted to get involved with the Disabled Commission. And I just went right to the, on my phone, which I don't usually do, I usually use my laptop. I pulled up the city, I pulled up that commission, I told him who was running it and here was the address and when they meet. And he said, thank you very much. People are willing to help. There's lots of ways to find out. The last thing I would say is that during our times, we have citizen comments, in all the times that people come in, in almost all cases, they get up, many times they hurl things at us that is not always accurate. Sometimes they do it in a way that, that is, the tone is not particularly nice. And then they get up and they walk out and they leave. Meanwhile, we sit through a two and a half hour meeting where we're actually doing the business of the city. And the last meeting we had, we had someone who stayed for the entire meeting and she came up and said, I'm going to come back. I, I, now I see what you guys are doing. So I encourage you to come to our meetings and stay to the end. Thank you.
We have the new committee, the Public Works Committee, where we're kind of in the nitty-gritty and talking about public works and things that need done and processes of it. We have actually a really good team on there that knows what they're talking about and has a lot of experience to bring to the table. So I encourage you to either come to it or listen to it if you can. So get on the city website, see where that's at. And then, I don't know the dates off the top of my head, so you can also email me if you're just wanting to know when the next one is and I can share that, the time and location. It is always at the Build Building at noon, I think it's the second Wednesday of every month. Second Wednesday of every month at noon at the Public Works Build Building. So I encourage if you can, I know that's not the best timing for a lot, some people at work. I have to leave in the middle of my workday to go to it, but it's a good thing to go to. There's a lot, some information that you're, and there is public comment there, which we don't allow public, again, because of the timing probably. Just wanted to share that though, because that's, that's, we're only into our second meeting, so that's, that's new for the public and so we're trying to add more, you know, to all the public that we're having this.
I would like to further what they have said in, when we have our city council meetings and you come and bring your thoughts to us and we can't answer you because it's not on our agenda to answer you. So that is why this was designed to do, to not just have you get up here and be heard, but for us to respond to you, for you to wait for a response. It was when Director Johnson came and gave us what had happened with the High Tower. There was a lot of passionate people that came that we listened to and then they left. There was over 10 people that got up and spoke and then they left instead of staying and listening to what Director Johnson had to say, the information. There was two people, two people that stayed. All that information only went to council and to those two people, when all of those other 10 people spoke and didn't stay to hear. So I was very disappointed in that. I'm disappointed we didn't have more people, but I'm very happy that we had those of you that are here and that you came to have an exchange of dialogue, not just to talk. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. We might try and see what we can do, but we think this time was very important to do it because of the, the High Reservoir.
And I would like to thank everyone for coming and for sparring with us a little bit, that's good. My door's always open. And if I don't know, I'll tell you I don't know. If I'm wrong, I'll be the first admitted. But I think, you know, some of the comments that were shared here today is, I, I believe we all want the same thing. I think we want a better city and so we just have to find a way to work together and get it done. I can assure you that this council is working very hard, I can assure you that our staff is working very hard and that we're all trying to do the best job that we can. And that includes the mayor. And I do my best to take all the politics out of this position and I try to put the people first. And so if there's something that you'd like to come visit with me about, please come. And I'd like to hear your ideas. I'll tell you what I know about things and if we need to get some more information, then I'm willing to do the legwork to get that. And if you don't have time to come down to City Hall or to a city council meeting, you know, I'd be willing to meet you at, at another location. So just give me a call or come down or email me. So thank you again very much for coming down. It's really, it blesses us to have you here because we don't always get a lot of citizen comments, there's involvement and it's hard. If we don't get that feedback sometimes to, you know, maybe make the best decision we can sometimes, but it's very valuable when we do hear from you. So thank you very much.
I would just say, I'd love to do it again, but about the halfway mark, we're getting up and doing some calisthenics because I'm about jacked up, but I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Lick, second by Councilor Forsman, that we adjourn this town hall meeting. Those in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.